Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of Monday, May 12th, 2025. Please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk call the items listed on the agenda, and under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address unless the address requirement has been waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to an item, and testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting of Monday, May 12th, 2025, is a reminder that due to the Memorial Day holiday, city council will not meet on May 26, 2025. Next on the agenda would be our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
We are lucky to have this today. Good afternoon, Mayor, and welcome.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Washington, and good afternoon, members of the council. I am so excited to be here for a very special Award of Excellence, the Mayor's Annual Award of Excellence for the year 2024. And I'm so pleased to be presenting it, well, I'm not going to tell you quite yet, but here's what I want to explain. At the beginning of every year, all of the previous monthly winners get another look, and the committee that reviews the Award of Excellence candidates picks one winner to become the annual Award of Excellence winner. And I'm so pleased to announce that this year for 2024 Annual Mayor's Award of Excellence goes to Lincoln Police Department Officer Antonia DeGeorge. Officer DeGeorge was nominated, as you may recall, by Sergeant Steve Redlin and Tyler Cooper in the categories of productivity and customer relations for her investigative work to help remove a juvenile from an abusive household. Last May, Officer DeGeorge responded to a call to check on the welfare of a 14-year-old living in a challenging environment. Her mindful, intelligent, compassionate, instinctive approach quickly established a rapport with the young person who felt comfortable enough to disclose concerns about their living situation to Officer DeGeorge. And recognizing the gravity of the situation, Officer DeGeorge took decisive action to prioritize the child's well-being, which ultimately led to the removal from a harmful environment. In the nomination letter, Sergeants Redlin and Cooper praised Officer DeGeorge's, quote, "investigative skill, attention to detail, and ability to empathize with the victim that led to the disclosure of a cycle of abuse that may have otherwise gone unreported." They went on to say that she changed the trajectory of this juvenile victim's young life, who now can begin to heal from the trauma. The nominators added that in the short time she has been with the Lincoln Police Department, Officer DeGeorge has already, quote, "earned a solid reputation and embodies what it means to serve and protect." On a personal note, you know, yesterday was Mother's Day, and that reminded me of something my own mother said when she first read about Officer DeGeorge's excellent work on my mayoral Facebook page. Yes, Officer George, I'm looking at the comments, which I sometimes try not to do. But there was my own mother posting on yours, and she said, quote, "How fortunate to have her on your team." Which is how I feel too, how we all should feel, and it's why we're so proud to be able to present this award to Officer George, the Mayor's Award of Excellence for 2024. Thank you for your exemplary service and for bringing your full heart to the job. Can you come up and I give this to you? Chief Morrow's going to come share a few words with us as well.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. It is just my pleasure to be here again to lift up Officer DeGeorge. When I was trying to decide what I wanted to touch on today, because we've been here before, and this case just really speaks for itself, but as the mayor mentioned, like how grateful we are and the reputation that she has earned. So I thought real quick I would highlight some of the other incredible work she has done on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department in service to our community, just in the last year. So in the short timeframe, so I'm not up here forever, because she's compiled a lot of commendations in her career thus far. So just looking at the last year, she's had 11, 11 commendations. Now, five of those, she clearly has a skill for being able to fingerprint. So five of those are for lifting fingerprints on crime scenes. And what I would say is like, this is remarkable, because it really actually speaks to her commitment and level of detail on all of the investigations that she has assigned. So of these, let's see, it looks like one was for residential burglary, one was for a theft at one of our local businesses, two on stolen vehicles, and one from a larceny from auto. Now, the reasons these get lifted up for commendation is because they were so well-done that they actually identified a potential suspect to be able to further the investigation, leading to case closure for the victims again that we serve. But in April of '25, two commendations come in, and one of them was from a partner agency. And this was regarding a call for service quite similar to the one that she was lifted up for today with the award. There was a young girl who was in a very difficult situation, and it was noted by a caseworker that was involved with this youth of how incredibly kind and compassionate Officer DeGeorge was in dealing with her. And then if that just didn't speak enough to have that partner, her mother, the young woman, young lady's mother also called in and wanted to pass along again just how highly professional Officer DeGeorge was, working with her daughter, and the compassion that she showed to her and the family. And then another one, in January of '25, this was a missing person involving one of our young community members who had been diagnosed with multiple mental health disorders, a drug addiction disorder, and had recently been hospitalized for her mental health illnesses. And these are hard cases for our officers, but again, it just speaks to the level of commitment of Officer DeGeorge that she spent an extensive amount of time over the course of several weeks, not just a day or two, but with her ongoing duties and extra calls for service every day coming in to exhaust all leads, and that included social media, collaborating with other agencies, not just locally but across the state. And ultimately, this young community member was found safe. So just wanted to highlight more about the work that she does. All of these commendations, these 11, are really reflective of her, but overall, the department that you have serving the community, in 2024, 762 commendations were received, which is pretty incredible. So we are thankful for Officer DeGeorge and what she represents for all of us at LPD.
Would you like to say a few words and maybe introduce any family members who are here?
Of course. Hello. Thank you for having me here. I would like to introduce my family. With me today, I have my mom, Michelle, my father, Tony, my sister, Chelsea, my grandpa, Rick, my brother-in-law, Jake, and my partner, Erica, and I also have a very close friend of mine, Forrest Dalton, here as well. So I'd like to say thank you to everybody. This is huge for me. It serves as a reminder to all patrol officers that each case we take, we need to take with care and have some patience too, especially if our youth are struggling. It serves as an important reminder for all of us. I would like to say thank you to the mayor, to the chief of police, and also to all my sergeants that are present with me here today. Without them and their continuous support, I would not be the person I am today or the officer I am today. So I am blessed for that. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. City of Lincoln is very lucky to have officers out there on the street who are like you, and of course, we are going to give you all the praise today, but I know that it's the entire force, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. We'll give everyone just a minute to leave chambers to take photos. Thank you so much, officers, for coming down. You're free to stay the entire meeting. Running from the room, all right. All right, Madam Clerk, let us begin with the consent agenda.
Next is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
So before, as we begin, would directors present who have an item on consent please come forward?
Good afternoon.
And Director Elliott?
Liz Elliott, Director, LTU 555 South 10th Street. Sorry, trying to figure out where I'm at. I have a number of different items on the list. I'm going to start first with just one C, which is a professional services agreement with Shimmer Associates on this. This is for work that's currently being done at First and Cornhusker Highway as part of a intersection improvement. This is 80% STBG funds, which is Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds, from, which are formula, federal formula funds that go through NDOT. So that's all of the reasons for all of the NDOT agreements on this. So this is just one of our standard NDOT agreements. I wanted to provide a little bit more background that it is for First and Cornhusker Intersection Project on that. Then we have three more below that. That is one D, one E, and one F, and one G on all of these. Essentially, let me just pull this up, on these ones, these are also very standard NDOT contracts that you see at a regular basis. This is an 80-20 split. 80% is federal funds, formula funds going through NDOT. 20% is LTU's and the city's responsibility. These projects are all currently in design, and they are going to be moving forward. So the Cotner Boulevard Project, construction is 2028. The 48th, 56th, and Calvert, construction is 2027. We have a package for Lincoln area bridges that does include the Harris Overpass. Those are two years, so 2026, 2027. We are currently planning on the Harris Overpass to be done in 2026. More information on that to come as we get through that, but that's a big one to be aware of. And then the First and Cornhusker Intersection, construction on that will actually occur in 2027. So a lot going on. These ones really are just getting us through the design phase with construction between '26 and '28, depending on which project it is. Happy to answer any questions you may have on these.
Are there any questions from councillors?
Thank you very much.
Very much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yeah, Barb McIntyre, 555 South 10th, and I'm here to speak to you about the reappointment of Kristi Abrams to the City Personnel Board. She has been on our board since 2019 and has a really strong legal background. She has served as a legal aide of Nebraska. She worked for the Nebraska Legislature, and currently, she's with the League of Nebraska Municipalities. She's been there for nine years. She's done a fantastic job on our board, and we're excited that she's willing to accept another five-year term.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Are there any other directors to present an item on consent? All right. So if there's anyone here in chambers today from the public who'd like to comment on an item that's on the consent agenda, please come forward and state whether the agenda item and whether or not you speak in favor or in opposition to an item on consent. I'll turn my microphone on, pardon me. All right, seeing no one coming forward to speak on a consent item, let's move to the voting session.
Item 1A is reappointing Kristi Abrams to the City Personnel Board for a term to expire June 22nd of 2030, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 1B is reappointing Artie Kelly to the Lincoln Housing Authority Board for a term to expire July 1st of 2030, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is approving the professional services agreement supplement number three for preliminary engineering services between the city and Shimmer Associates, Inc. for the First Street and Cornhusker Highway Intersection Project, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is approving an agreement between the city and the State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the city to perform responsible charge services for the Cotner Boulevard from O Street to Star Street Rehab Project, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1E is approving an agreement between the city and the State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the city to perform responsible charge services for the 48th and 56th and Calvert Street Intersection Project, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1F is approving the agreement between the city and the State Nebraska Department of Transportation for the city to perform responsible charge services for the Lincoln Area Bridges Project, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1G is approving an agreement between the city and the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the city to perform responsible charge services for the First Street and Cornhusker Highway Intersection Improvement Project, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Council Chair?
Yes.
I have a question and a request to possibly call items 1H through 1M together.
I certainly, I can agree to that. I'm going to look to city attorney. Madam Clerk has asked.
If there's agreement from the council, then yes, unanimous consent of the council. You are allowed to do that, not hearing any objection from anyone.
Thank you so much. I think we typically see them together, so we, it is nice to band them all together. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All righty.
I'll call the roll and call items 1H through 1M together. Approving the assessment resolution for College View Business Improvement District, Havlog Business Improvement District, North 27th Street Business Improvement District, University Place Business Improvement District, West O Street Business Improvement District, and South Street Business Improvement District, and assessing the cost against the benefited properties, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Well, second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. I'll call item 1N, approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended March 31st of 2025, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Fantastic. Let's move ahead to liquor resolutions.
I'll call items 4A and 4B together. Application of Keds Enterprises, Inc., doing business as DaVinci's for a Class C liquor license located at 2650 Superior Street, and the related manager application of Joe Armstrong.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. I am Joe Armstrong. I'm applying for the application, or for the liquor license for our North 27th and Superior location for the DaVinci's.
All right. Do you want to tell us a little bit, is this just a, oh, right, no, please explain. This is a good thing.
No, we are, so DaVinci's has been in business for 47 years, and this will be the first time we've applied for another license, which we've been granted. And this will be our second location that will have a liquor license where we can enhance our dining experience at our North 27th location, be able to do wine tastings, and beer and pizza go great together, and wine and pasta go great together. So we're just looking to enhance the dining experience for our guests.
All right, thank you very much. Your application, you look like you have a ton of experience.
Just a little bit, just a little bit. Been doing this for a while.
Okay, all right. Councillors, are there any questions?
No questions.
All right. All right, we'll open this for public comment, and thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Is there anyone here in chambers this afternoon who'd like to speak on this application, either in support or in opposition? This is items 4A and B. Seeing no one come forward, Madam Clerk, let's move to the next item.
I'll call item 4C and D together. Application of Val Limited, doing business as Haymarket Park, for a Class I liquor license located at 403 Line Drive Circle, and the related manager application of Anthony J. Messinio.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon to everyone as well. Thank you.
All right. So why would baseball and a liquor license go, I'm joking. Would you tell us a little bit about your application?
Sure. You know, we've been doing operations there since 2019, had a current license. We had some change in ownership due a death and needed to completely reapply for the license. So just continuing with that, and here to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Their lines really move quick, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for that experiential testimony.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, well.
No questions.
I hope everything's seamless from your end, and we'll take public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
Go play ball. All right. Is there anyone here today in chambers who'd like to speak on this item? This is item C and D. Seeing no one coming forward, Madam Clerk, let's move ahead.
I'll call item 4E, manager application of Cherry Avril for VFW 3606, doing business as VFW 3606 located at 3340 West A Street.
All right. Is Ms. Avril in the room, or someone representing the application? Okay. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this application, either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to talk about these items, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 4A through 4E.
Second.
Second came from Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Let's move ahead to the next section, public hearing, resolutions.
I'll call item 5A, approving the 101 North 14th Street Redevelopment Project between the city of Lincoln and Tall Grass Development, Inc., relating to the redevelopment of property genre located at 101 North 14th Street.
All right. Good afternoon, Director.
Good afternoon. Peter Heine, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. It's been a while since I've been here. It's nice to see you all today. I'm going to walk through this project and what we're doing, and we're going to have the developer and Mr. Seacrest here to answer any questions that you might have when I get through some of the details. Essentially, this project is the first facade project that's coming out of our downtown corridors, TIF district. We've been working with the developer to really think about how we can stitch together the west side of 14th Street from O to P and think about it as a team and as an owner and public-private partnerships to really make a vibrant streetscape. And so as a reminder, the TIF district of the downtown corridors contemplated streetscape, right-of-way improvement, landscaping, streets, curbs, and facade improvements for public good. And so this is one of those projects, and it's located within the area. The total amount of the TIF will be $210,000, and I'll go over the sources and uses in just a minute. I'll just remind you and show you the project site. Let me get that switched over. I want to point out that the site we're talking about is just here. the site we're talking about is just here on Fourteenth Street, and just north of it, you'll see this red box is owned by the city, so there's a relationship here where the developer owns the piece of land, but they essentially own a volume underneath our parking garage, is what they have, and so, within their plat, they've got defined heights they can go and different things, so I'm gonna show you some of the easements, I want you to understand the easements associated with this, because it helps the project become a reality by us placing those easements on the project. And to understand it, I'm gonna show you it in plan first, but one of the things we have on Fourteenth Street, just north of O, is a large curb cut, and this project will close that curb cut, but today we're here just about the facade of the building, we're not talking about the curb cut today, that'll be, that's a separate agreement, so we're gonna be closing that curb cut, and you can see here what it will do to the public face of the street, so right now you can see this large fifty-plus-foot curb cut will be gone with this project, and we're gonna be infilling where this red car is, and this whole area will now become a building underneath the parking garage, just like the jewelry store, and bars, and some sandwich shops that we currently have there. To introduce you to out again, so this is what is contemplated for the design of Fourteenth Street, and you can see the addition of parallel parking, where that curb cut is, and a continuation of the public space, shade, lighting, trees, landscaping, so on the street side, this project helps us really gain that valuable public space. I'll talk about the sources and uses at the end, just as a schematic, I wanna just show you the facade that was prepared by P Studio Architects for the developer, because I think it gives you an idea, the best idea, of what's happening on the street, you can see, the city owns the old entrance, and this will be a separate project as well, to university, or to the parking garage, and that will be redesigned in another project that will come later, that will own as the city, but the private improvements will be a new facade, new storefront, and new signage, new material facing the street, and in the plan, I'll put right behind you so you can understand it, right behind that facade will be one or two new tenant spaces that the developer will have for new tenants to enliven the street, so we're gonna go from cars parking against the public way to activity that will happen in the future. And now I'll talk about the easements, because they're not simple, let's put it that way. The first one is simple, there is access to the north, to P Street, we will make sure that the easement stays in place, so that the tenants can access that P Street entrance into the back of house, if you will, for parking deliveries, then there's a similar easement that we will contemplate as well, coming from the east, that I have a plan for somewhere, right here, and that will be a connection from Fourteenth Street to the west into that P Street entrance, so we're giving an easement from the north to the south, and from the east to the west, in order for the tenant to be able to access the back of house of their space, just here. I can answer any questions on that, if you're confused, and come back to them. Now for the interesting part, the other easements we're keeping in place, along with the facade easement, are easements actually underneath our structure, so if you think about the structure that's there now, holds up cars, it's concrete, the developer is gonna build a new structure below that, and waterproof it, and insulate it, and do everything else, so between that, architects love to call it the interstitial space, big word, so that easement will be there so that they and us, they can fix their roof, and we can fix our garage, and vice versa, and so we're gonna have those defined within this as we move forward, so that they can essentially build this ship in a bottle, if you will, inside of our garage, is what will happen. Okay, so as the project gets built, and comes online, and becomes a tenant space, it will add to the district for the TIF, as it becomes, but we're using the district TIF to do this facade improvement, and you can see here, the improvement total will be four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that is just for the facade, the project behind it to do footings, and foundations, and floors, and tenant space is greater than that, but we're really focusing on that facade improvement, and you can see that the TIF portion is two hundred and ten thousand dollars, with some fees that are associated with it, there's no bond in this case, so there's no bond fees or anything like that. So, that's what's in front of you today, to contemplate, and I can answer any questions that you might have for this.
Alright, Councilman.
Yes. Will that facade go all the way to the corner?
No, it doesn't, so let me show you in plan, and then I'll show you in elevation, so right now, sorry, somebody, can we go back to the overhead? Right now we have the bar, cigar bar, help me with the name, I can't remember.
Drinks.
Drinks, and then we have another tenant space, we have the jewelry store, we have the entrance to the garage.
Right.
That will go away eventually, we won't have that entrance, we won't use it for the garage.
Sidewalk area to the.
And then we have, then we have the large opening, which is the curb cut today, and then we have the sandwich shop, so all that we're talking about is the section right here in this dashed line, which corresponds to this improvement just here, so the sandwich shop is to the left, and then this improvement will be new storefront, new signage, and there is, just, you can just make it out here with these three windows, the space is tall enough to have potentially a second floor or mezzanine inside of the space, and so as the project gets more developed, and they understand ingress and egress, they'll look to capture some of that tall volume within that box of space that I described, and so it's just gonna be doing that elevation there, and then Councilman Duden, with this project, we're coordinating with another design team that will happen later, and sort of planning for that to happen, but we are gonna be looking at redesigning and rethinking that entrance, because that's not just the entrance to the garage, it's actually the ingress and egress for the pedestrians to go in and out of that garage, and in and out of the housing that's there as well, so amplifying that entrance to make it feel that it's connected to the street, that it's a public way as well, is important to us.
I have a question, you had said that the city's retaining of the, an easement that runs west from Fourteenth Street underneath the garage, connecting with the other easement that runs north-south.
That's correct.
I understood that, and then just a moment ago, you looked at the photo, and you said that that, some entrance was going away?
Well, the, 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 the use of, this is complicated, the use of the entrance for parking access, our parking team, I won't say doesn't care about it, but they don't need it, it would be beneficial if it went away, and so, this is looking at the roof plan, but essentially, if we could use an X-ray and zoom all the way through, you enter from the east and drive under the parking garage.
Yeah.
You go up this alley and turn right, and somehow, you keep turning, and keep turning to go up the ramp.
Mm-hmm.
That movement, if you're in a very small vehicle, you can do it, but if you're not, you can't do it, and so it's multi, so if we can get rid of that, and just have entrance from the north into the parking garage, that would be our preference, right now.
But the city would still retain the easement?
Yes, we are gonna retain the easement for two things, we're gonna, we're gonna retain this easement for vehicles, for just access, not necessarily for the public to drive in and around, but we're also, and importantly, keeping the pedestrian easement from, this is the elevator tower.
Oh, yeah.
That runs to the east from above, and as you park your car, the notion is, because it's the music district, you're gonna get out of your car, you're gonna hear music, you're gonna have all of these different things, it's gonna be this great event, so that you can come down and filter down into the music district, and I would also mention that the alley to the west, the alley, sometimes we all call it, through Barrymore's and from Thirteenth Street, that alley is used quite a lot, and so we're thinking of that connection from west to east, all the way across the block, is what we're doing, so we will definitely retain that.
Okay, so if a person wants to use that parking garage, they're gonna come down P Street.
Yes.
And turn into the parking garage instead of Fourteenth, and doing that tight wrap?
That's correct.
Alright.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciated that visual.
Mr. Seacrest.
Red the Fourteenth Street entrance to the parking garage?
Eventually, yes, yes, we will, not immediately, but.
Not tomorrow?
Not tomorrow.
Alright.
But that's the goal. Mr. Seacrest, in some of his exhibits, also started to explain some of where we're giving the different easements for different pedestrians in Tallgrass, so again, we've thought about this, we're working through all of the detail of how we're gonna make sure that this works, both for the developer and their tenants, and the city and urban development as well.
Alright, thank you very much, one more chance for councillors to ask questions? Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from, for the team?
I'm gonna give them an opportunity, if they wanna come forward.
I think they wanna come up and say a few words, I think it'd be great. I also wanna thank, you know, our team, Hallie Salem was, and is, a rock star for urban development, and works really hard, as a team, we're really trying to think about how to, think about downtown and the music district, you know, it's, the mayor's vision for this downtown as a vibrant place is just our number-one goal, and it's been great to work on this.
Thank you very much, Director Heine.
Take it away.
Alright, the Tallgrass team, welcome.
Thank you.
Afternoon, my name is David Schmidt, I'm the president of Tallgrass Development, this is my son Dana, he's also part-owner, and Peter did a great job of describing what we're trying to do here, it's not gonna be easy, it's a little complicated, as you could tell, but we think we have, our arms are wrapped around it pretty well, and basically, we've got P Studios that'll be involved in designing our building, we've worked with Guild Peace many times in the past, seems like whenever we work with, with Peace, we come up with the right solutions to the problems, in this case, we, we build a, a building underneath the parking garage, which is the only lot that is not developed under that parking garage, private lot, so we will be the last one there to build, and we're gonna build a facade first, which is a little bit unusual, but that's how it's gonna work, so that we can coordinate with the city on all the infrastructure on Fourteenth Street, and try to jive all of this, that'll be his problem, to make sure that all of the construction happens at the right time, so we've, we've had a good relationship with Hallie, with Peter, and with Tim C, and our attorney, Kent Seacrest, has done a great job on the documents, so we, we just think we've got a really good project here, we're excited to work with the music district, and it's gonna be a home run, I think, when we're done, so, I don't know if there's any other questions that you have for Dana, or myself, but we'd be glad to entertain them.
Any questions or comments, Councilman Duden?
What kind of business are you gonna put in there?
It'll be some sort of retail that's appropriate for Fourteenth Street downtown, more than likely it'll be some sort of a food establishment, bar.
Not a vape shop?
No, no vape shops, no tattoo parlors, you know, we've, we've had some exclusions here, involved in this development, so no, but it'll be probably, and I'll say that we do not have a tenant at this time, so we haven't designed it yet, that'll be next, we'll throw it out to the market, and hope that we, we find a good tenant.
Bring back some Yeti Works.
Maybe.
Never know. I, I would like to add, just with our, the development team's experience in working with urban development, we did the alley when we did the Lincoln Flats redevelopment, and so we're very familiar, our construction company just completed the music box just south of here, and so we're, we're very familiar and experienced in this area, I would just like to add that as well.
Thank you, that's actually good, that's good to know, 'cause building underneath a parking garage, I would assume is a niche business.
It's, it, it, it won't be easy, but we've, we've looked at it every which way.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Alright. Is there anyone here in chambers today who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, Madam Clerk, let's move forward.
I'll call item five B, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April sixteen through April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five.
Is there anyone here today with a claim against the city that you'd like to approach to counsel, and speak to council? If so, please come down. Welcome.
My name's Tiffany Rank, I'm property owner at six four zero three Leighton Avenue. We had had a, a city tree fall on our property, and we were trying to recover the damages, we had received a letter that it was going to be suggested that our claim be denied, and I just wanted to provide some additional documentation. It was said that there was no disease or anything wrong with the tree, but as you can see, this is the stump that's left after the tree was completely removed, this tree first started coming down last year, June twenty-fourth, we noticed that half of the tree was, coming down was about twelve feet from above our driveway, by morning it was down to six feet, we had taken pictures of where it was splitting, reported it, it shut down the road construction on Leighton at that point in time, that was the original crack. They had to stop the construction until that part of the tree was taken down, 'cause it was too large for them to continue, it was a danger, we were told that just the minimum to get the construction going again was gonna be taken down, we thought it would be revisited, but unfortunately it wasn't, I know there's been all kinds of storms and whatnot, it's been a crazy year for forestry, I don't envy them their job, but, so, on the nineteenth of March, when we had that crazy snow blizzard that lasted for a day, and everything melted, the next day was the day that the rest of the tree came down on the house, and this is some of the wood that came from it, you can see that there's quite a bit of rot within. It wasn't a matter of the wind taking the tree down being the reason, it was more if, and as you can see here, that's where it split off, and you can see that it was completely rotten, so we're just asking that our damages to the house, roof, gutters, siding, railing, two windows, a screen, and one of the two vehicles that was hit be covered, the second vehicle, it's a Viter car, we're not worried about it, it's already got its own damage, that we don't need anything fixed on that, so, yeah, that's all that I had additional to.
Alright, first, do other councillors have questions?
Question from Parks, when they looked at it.
Okay, I think Director, oh, Chris is here, pardon me, our city forester. You might wanna stay in the vicinity, we have two microphones, so Chris can.
Good afternoon, Chris Myers, nine oh one, city forester, nine oh one West Bond.
Chris, can you give us a little history about this tree, and what Parks did with it?
Well, we do have some call-ins, and the first one was identified as June twenty-fifth, and I think that's probably when they came. and I think that's probably when they came out and took down that first piece. And then, as she mentioned, it was not revisited before the storm on June, or July 31st. I don't know, I don't have any indication in the notes that I have of when that was going to be addressed, so I don't have that.
What does your report say about the tree?
I wish they had brought my glasses, I'm sorry. It was assigned to the crew, and they were going to take off the limb, but that's pretty much all I have.
Could you repeat that? I'm really sorry, I couldn't-
I'm trying to hear you, Chris.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. It shows that there is a hanger and a large limb, and they addressed those on the, in June, but I don't have any other notes that I can see on this piece of paper from that. I can certainly look into that and give you some more details, but I don't have them with me today, so.
So, the, Councilman Beckis.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, your notes don't indicate that you, your team was going to go back out and do further assessment and/or remediation of the tree?
I can't speak to that entirely. If they took half of it down, I'm certain that they were going to return and deal with the other half of that. We did have a windstorm on May 2nd that kept the crews busy, and then we had the other one in May 31st, but this was, well, I'm getting them mixed up now, I've got too many storms, but, the one in March, we did have one event, March 4th, an icing event, we had a lot of storm damage from that, so that probably played into the fact that we didn't get back to it quite as soon as we should have.
Okay.
Would you just give the dates one more time? So, the tree was reported on which date?
It was originally, it was back in June 24.
June 24.
Right. And then, this would have been in relation, well, I guess, the tree was removed in March, March 24th, so that's six months, or more than six months, so, yeah.
I'm having a hard time getting the timeline.
Well, it's the 24th of June, this is longer, wider than I, I'm getting the stuff mixed up, but anyway, and then, it was, the rest of the tree came down, it looks like the 24th of March 2025, so that's essentially nine months, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would it be possible to bring City Law up to talk through their decision-making through this process, and then maybe we can come back to Chris if needed?
I think that's a good idea. Thank you very much, Councilman Beckis. Good afternoon.
Lily Ely, Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th Street.
Thank you for coming up. Could you walk us through your decision-making process on this claim, please?
Absolutely. So, the forestry notes that I have, similar to what Chris walked you through, indicate that in June of 2024, there was a report that a hanger was hanging, for lack of a better word there, off of the tree, and so, that is what they went out to remediate in that. So, they just removed that large hanger. I don't, I mean, I don't have a picture, I'm assuming it's fairly large. And then, there's no request for service or information between that and when this tree falls, so because of that, City Law recommends a denial, because there's a storm event with very strong winds on the 19th, and I don't have anything in forestry's reports that indicate more of the tree needed to come down between 2024 and 2025.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Madam Chair, no further questions for me.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Duden?
I'm having trouble with the timeline. So, over a nine-month period of time, this tree was reported bad, part of it was taken down, and then, nothing happened for nine months?
I don't think that's entirely correct. I think they received a call on June 24th, 2024. Someone comes out to inspect the tree on the 25th, a large limb is removed from the tree, and that, I believe, is the end of what forestry believes needed to be done at that tree, on that tree at that time. And so, because there's no additional request for service between June 25th, 2024, and the date that the tree falls, there'd be no reason for forestry to have returned in that nine-month period.
Thank you. Councilmanship?
Do you have additional questions?
I'd like to go back to the complaint here.
I have a question for Ms. Easley. So, Ms. Easley, thank you for coming forward. The plaintiff showed some pictures of a tree that seemed to be, have some issues. That was not documented when the hanger was, do you have any documentation to show that inspection at the time the hanger was removed, there was any other issues with that tree?
No.
Were no other calls saying the tree's in bad shape, you need to take it down, or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions for any participant? All right. You've got some questions. Councilman Duden, sorry.
Did you call after this tree, the big branch was taken down on June 25th?
We didn't call again, because we were told it was going to be revisited. They just needed to get, what needed to come down, so that road construction could resume.
Did they say when it was going to be revisited?
No. This was, right-
Did they say why?
All of Leighton was shut down at that point in time, it was during that road construction project, so it was enough to get the project going again, and then, once that was done, we were told, we were told that it would be revisited. We didn't get details on that, as to when someone else would be coming out to look at it again, or do any additional follow-up. We just assumed that, since we were told it was going to be revisited, that it would when they had time. It's been a crazy storm year, so we were trying to give some leeway and not be all up in their business.
Do you have any pictures of damaging your cars? Do you have that?
Yes, I have all the house and car damage pictures, sorry. That's the car that sustained the most damage. That's where it came, that was what was left of the tree and the branch. Sorry, I just, I emailed all these, and I should have printed them off as well, too. I'm sorry, this is my first time doing this kind of thing.
Right, you're doing fine.
That's a video. Let me see here. Do you want up-close pictures of the car?
That picture that you took of the trunk, was that looking down on the-
On the stump. Yes. That's what's left of the stump that's on the boulevard, or whatever you call the area between the sidewalk and the street. That's the remaining part.
Any other questions for the applicant, the person, the petitioner, the claimant? Thank you. I think I want to follow up with the forester for just one moment, and if there's more information that you can't read, because you don't have your glasses, could someone else from Parks read the report, or something? I just, I want to make certain that we've gotten what's in the notes on the report.
I don't have those, I don't have those notes.
You don't have those notes with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's another, maybe law does, but I don't have the notes, the additional notes that may be in there.
Okay, so, when the crew, when the crew came on the 25th of June to remove the hanger, and Ms. Schmidt says that there was a conversation that said that they would be back, I would like to know if the notes that forestry has mentions anything about returning.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
As she mentioned, Leighton was shut down, and it was really difficult for even us to get in there and work-
Okay.
-at that time, and I'm not sure when that project was finally completed.
Right before school started.
Right before school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chris, when you do remove the hanger, is a full inspection on the health of the tree done then, to determine if it requires more trimming, or that, some type of evaluation on the health of the tree, and is that documented?
Usually, the guys are really good, especially in a case where there's a big leader that's, you know, a hanger that's being removed, to do a, look it over, make sure it's not hazardous at that point in time, and make a determination of what they're going to do next. But I don't know that it gets put in all the time, you know, puts in the notes, so.
And it sounds like City Law has reviewed these notes, so.
Okay.
Did you say? No, I was just, I was just saying that City Law-
Oh.
-has already stated that they have reviewed these forestry notes and found no mention of anything that would lead them to indicate that follow-up was going to occur, or needed to.
I guess my only thing with that, Tom, is it'd be nice to see those notes. And it sounds like we just don't do a very good job on documentation, when we go out on something like that, and that tree looks like it's in pretty sad shape, and what they left behind looked pretty poor, too, so. My concern is, is if there's documentation on what they told people, when they're going to be back, that sort of thing, I think we should, I think we, as a council, should see those notes.
My understanding is that City Law has stated that there were no notes that were relevant. Our city attorney, attorney's office, had reviewed the notes.
I think it's fair to say we're unaware of any, any notes. I understand that what we've heard today, that there's an implication that maybe there is some notes. I think if the council wanted to put it on pending for us to do additional investigation and research, to see if there was any other communications, we're happy to do that, but yes, I think that we don't, we're unaware of any other documentation or notes to indicate otherwise, other than what we've told you today.
I just get the impression from forestry that they're not sure if there's other-
And that's what I mean, we're happy to talk more with forestry if we, you know-
Thank you.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That seems, I think, it seems wise right now.
Give it some time.
All right. All right.
We would just ask that it be placed on pending for us to do that, and then, we can communicate like we did last time about when it would be coming back if-
So, pending, no date certain is, so that we don't, we don't, we don't push it and say it has to be reviewed entirely in the next-
It will normally, a lot of times, it'll be on the next one anyway, I just don't always know where that is standing up here, and it's just better to, without having a date, just have it be on pending and work through, back through its normal process.
Okay. Yeah, we won't box you in then.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for coming forward, Ms. Smith.
We'll do this during the motion portion of the program.
We will.
We'll have additional conversation then about the proper motion to do this.
Yes.
All of that. Thank you. Ms. Rank, sorry. All right. Is there another claimant here today, this afternoon, who'd like to bring a claim forward to the city? All right. Seeing none, we will move to the next item, and then, Ms. Rank, we will come back and vote on this in about 10 minutes or so. Thank you. All righty. Madam Clerk?
I'll call Item 5C, approving Amendment Number 2 to the Canopy Park, excuse me, Canopy Park Project Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Lincoln, West Haymarket, Joint Public Agency, West Haymarket Holding Company, LLC, and Canopy Park, LLC, relating to the redevelopment of property generally located on the west side of Canopy Street between N Street and O Street and the adjacent right-of-way and public property.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th Street. What you have in front of you with this resolution is an Amendment Number 2 to the Canopy Park Redevelopment Agreement. It was initially approved in 2019, there was an Amendment Number 1 in 2020. This is the redevelopment project at the northwest corner of Canopy Street and N Street, multi-family housing project there. Within that agreement, there were some references to a plaza that was to be constructed on the south side of N Street, I think as part of the South Haymarket Park. As the plans for that park have developed, that plaza is no longer part of the plans for that park, so we're just removing some references to that plaza. There are some references throughout the agreement to financing that plaza and to parking with respect to events at that plaza, so the amendment is all reflective of that. The amount of the tax increment financing doesn't change some of the funds that would have otherwise been put towards that plaza, or put towards other eligible priority expenses. So, that's what you have in front of you. We'd ask you to approve the Amendment Number 2. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, let's move, oh, is there anyone here in chambers who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? You can come forward if you do. Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, let's move into the voting session with Item 5A.
Item 5A is approving the 101 North 14th Street Redevelopment Project between the City of Lincoln and Tallgrass Developments, Inc., relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 101 North 14th Street, introduced by Beckis.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Second, Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
For something exciting. Thank you very much. All right. Item 5B.
Item 5B is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April 16 through April 30 of 2025, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, Carlson.
And I'd like to make a motion that this last complaint, and I don't remember her name-
Ms. Rank?
Tiffany Rank.
So, do we want to remove for further review, move it for further review?
Yes, I think the motion would be to move the Rank claim back to pending, for an undeterminate amount of time for now.
What's, what's the name again on it?
Rank, R-A-N-K, yep.
That's simple.
Very simple.
Okay. All righty, so we have a motion to move the Rank claim to pending.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Second, Carlson. All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the motion to move to pending.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, and now, the main motion.
Beckis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Thank you for all of your patience in working through that. All righty, let's call the vote on 5C.
Item 5C is approving Amendment Number 2 to the Canopy Park Project Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Lincoln, West Haymarket Joint Public Agency, West Haymarket Holding Company, LLC, and Canopy Park, LLC, relating to the redevelopment of property generally located on the west side of Canopy Street between N Street and O Street and the adjacent right-of-way and public property, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. All righty, we can move forward now for our public hearing ordinance's second reading.
Item 6A is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefaced by the letter- are assigned to the pay range prefix by letter M by creating the classification City Facilities Manager.
All right. Good afternoon, Director McIntyre.
Twice in one day, I usually don't get to come up this much. Barb McIntyre, 555 South 10th. So we are creating this position. The city has a number of buildings throughout the community, and this position was a planned for add to staff. It's in the budget. It will be in the finance department under Joe Donlinger. So it would be a new facility, facilities manager, which is vital to creating city way up operational efficiencies and lowering our costs. The position is created, and we've priced it, and we're very comfortable with the tasks and the pay line, so.
All right. Any questions for Director McIntyre? Go ahead, Mr. Becki, I mean, Council Duden.
(laughing). My brother's over there.
Yeah. Take a break and get some coffee.
Will this include the police department's buildings, the fire department buildings?
All of the buildings that are, except the ones where we have, where we share public building commission, that's our sharing space. But we have so many buildings, fire stations, police stations, some of our parks and rec facilities. I'm trying to think of a, there's a lot of only city-owned facilities, and we really need someone to be able to focus on those buildings and manage them.
This is long overdue. Thank you.
Absolutely. You are welcome. It's happy to do the work.
All right. All right, Director.
Thanks.
If there's anyone here today who'd like to speak on this item, please come forward, either in favor or in opposition. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. Thank you.
Section 7, ordinance's third reading of related resolutions. Item 7A is approving the labor contract between the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln City Employees Association for a term effective August 15, 2024, through August 31 of 2026, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 7B is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pre-ranges prefix by A, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 7C is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefix by C, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 7D is text amendment 25005, requesting the planning department to amend the Lincoln Municipal Code to increase opportunities to grow and sell produce in residential and residential adjacent zoning districts by amending chapter 27.02, definitions to update the definition of greenhouse and urban garden, amending section 27.06.060, agriculture use group to allow urban gardens as a permitted use in districts where agriculture is allowed, amending section 27.62.030 agriculture use group to update the conditions for urban gardens, and amending section 27.70.010 home occupations to clarify that selling garden produce is allowed as a home occupation, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 7E is change of zone 21020C, application Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders to amend the south of downtown planned unit development to allow a subarea two for a neighborhood support service use with a waiver to maximum R7 height limit from 35 feet to 40 feet on property generally located at 919 South 12th Street, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Councilman Bowers.
Thanks so much. I just want to take a few minutes. I want to express my strong support for Community Actions Gathering Place and their critical services they provide to our community. As someone with a background in social work, I've seen firsthand how organizations like the Gathering Place not only serve meals, but also provide dignity, respect, and connection to individuals and families who depend on them. Serving approximately 4,500 evening meals per month, their impact is undeniable. In times when programs like Community Actions Head Start faces devastating funding cuts, it's essential that our city strengthens its partnership and commitment to community services. Community Actions Gathering Place is a vital example of meeting the needs of our residents and providing essential support and resources. I deeply respect the applicant's persistence, positivity, and unwavering dedication to their mission. Meeting basic needs, fighting hunger, and providing tangible support for people facing hardships in our city is not always popular and continues to carry stigma. I commend their courage and determination in pushing forward despite challenges and their diplomacy in getting results. Sometimes when organizations provide services directly in communities, some misconceptions can come up, and I just want to address one. This infrastructure update does not mean that this will somehow create more people in need of seeking services. Having them have the tools and the resources to be able to meet the need does not increase poverty rates or increases the number of people needing services. The Gathering Place will continue to serve the same community and respond to the need regardless of the tools that they have, and that speaks to their dedication. This simply enables them to serve our residents more safely, effectively, and with greater dignity, and the City of Lincoln should be supportive of this. I wholeheartedly support their amendment, recognizing it as an opportunity to rehabilitate an existing structure, enhance the neighborhood, ensure ongoing support, and maintain the dignity for those in need. We must continue to encourage and facilitate these crucial community-focused projects. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Abstain.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes, point of information.
We can move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
I just want to say, point of information, the reason why Brody had to abstain is because he actually serves on the Board of Directors for Community Action, and I appreciate his public service in helping that organization meet the needs.
All right, let's move to the next item.
Item 7F is street and alley vacation 24003, application of Highway 2 Development LLC and 3814 Farnham LLC to vacate excess right-of-way portions adjacent to Pine Lake Road and Archer Place generally located near the intersection of Pine Lake Road and Nebraska Parkway, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
I'll second.
Carlson, second.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Beckius.
I would like to make a motion to amend number one on this, requested by the Law Department to, there is a substitute ordinance as exhibit A that was distributed to counselors earlier today that better meets the needs of the Register of Deeds for filing the necessary information.
Thank you. All right. So we have a first and a second on the motion. No, we have a first. We need a second.
Yeah, we need a second.
For this, for the...
Motion to amend.
And I will second the motion to amend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. All right, so we have a first and a second on the motion to amend. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Weber?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right, thank you very much.
Section 8 is resolutions, first readings are items 8A through 8G. Section 9 is our pending list, items 9A through 9E.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Beckius.
Could I please make a motion to move item 9A, move it to a public hearing? I'd like to also, with this motion, suspend the rules to move it to second hearing to occur on May 19. Or, I'm sorry, June 2nd, my apologies.
June 2nd, okay. So you'd like to move this from pending to a hearing, public hearing on June 2nd, and that takes also amending the rules or waiving the rules?
Suspending.
Suspending, thank you. Suspending the rules.
I'm here just in case. Yes, I think you got it right. The motion is public hearing on June 2nd. We're at, the request is to suspend the rules to have it on June 2nd. The reason why the request, the reason why there was a request to suspend the rules is that Rule 3.31, your council rules requires two meaning notice unless that two meaning notice requirement is waived, unless the rules are suspended and five votes are required due. I would note, just, I think we maybe realized this, but the only reason there's really not a two meaning notice is because there's a holiday in between. We're not meeting on the 29th, I think, but for that, it would be certainly a two week notice.
Right, right. And the item has been on first reading before, before we placed it to pending, so now we're bringing it back.
Yes.
All of those things are true. Thank you for stepping up, though. We always feel much more comfortable, Mr. Christie, when you're here.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
All right, so Mr. Beckius has made a motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Second, Carlson. All right. Madam Clerk, let's, unless there's discussion, for clarification. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to amend. A motion to move, suspend public hearing on June 2nd.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you. All right. We are in the second meeting of the month, and so we are now available for open public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on today's agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so right now in the open session. We ask that individuals take no more than a five minutes to speak, regardless of the number of topics which you would like to address, and that you maintain civility, allowing the business of council to proceed unimpeded. I see our first person has come forward. Just one moment, and we'll get you a microphone.
I can control it in the back. If you want to place something there, or if you'd like me to assist you, I can, and I can put it there. Yeah. All right. Good afternoon, members of the council. I just wanted to inform you on an update of, you know, just what's happening with me and the, I was evicted because, you know, anyway, I had to move to another building because they replaced the elevator. When I moved back, the moving company that they used to move my stuff back, I have pictures and...
In this pause, would you mind, please, stating your name and address?
My name is Josephine. I'm just gonna say that. That's all I want to say.
Okay.
J-O-S-E-P-H-I-N-E. For example, I can move, I can. Yeah, that'd be great. I'm gonna show a couple of pictures. And so that's one of the, one of the damages that I sustained on this table, which was given to me by a friend, and it kind of means something. And it's cracked all the way through. I have pictures that show, I think I can do this. Let me grab it. And this is, this is my subwoofer, and there's, if you can enlarge it, there's, it was brand, basically brand new, and it's got a dent, and there's some messed up scuffs on top. You know, like, a lot of handicapped people, we have messed up baseboards. I have a hole in my door, you know, stuff happens. So I really don't want to look at my brand new stuff like that. So they, they gave me $18. And this is Eric Bashir's, he's the building manager at Concord. And so he was, he told me that he uses black belt moving from time to time, and they sent me an $18 check. And he said, you know, I had to call him. And I'm like, no, you paid for me. This is, the protocol is, and especially if you do use them sometimes, what you do is you call him, when you, he saw the damage, by the way. And when I say $18, you take care of it, because you're using them from time to time. And so, because, and then I, what happened was, I got frustrated, you know, it was very nice, you know, he kind of prevaricated, you know, anyway, it got delayed, and I, very nicely, and then I just lost it. And so I guess I was belligerent because I couldn't understand the insanity that I was encumbered with. And so the thing is, though, I want to contest the eviction, and, you know, that's a, that's a no-win situation, but, you know, this is just ridiculous. And if I lose, and I lose, I lose my voucher for three years, I'm not going to a nursing home. And so I'm just letting you know what's happening, because if I, if I would challenge this, then as soon as I, if I lost, which is likely, then I'd have, they'd put me in a home somewhere, a nursing home. I'm a, you know, I went to a nursing home to look, and that's, that's just frightening. I ain't doing it. And so, in my other case of drama, after my brother dared me to commit suicide, I mentioned before, and so I had, they had a hearing, and they said, you know, they got rid of my waiver because I was dangerous, so I couldn't have in-home services, so I would lose my, I lost my waiver like in 10 days. And then I'm trying to appeal it, and this is the interesting thing. I'm trying to appeal, and I'm following their paperwork, and then they say, you know, you gotta submit this to district court. And I had something that, similar, that was in county court, and now they're saying I gotta find a, no, you know, I'm not gonna find a form. You tell me, you know, DHHS, you know, it's nasty. They don't give a, you know. And so I'm looking at, you know, perhaps, that's another problem, because if I were to, if this were to stand, then, you know, for the general person, who's gonna do your stuff? You lose your stuff, you go right to a nursing home. And, but Concord, Eric Bashir's and the building manager, Celeste Betterbanks, and, as in the, anyway, I'm gonna, I have more to say, but this is wearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a problem for me, but I always do it for the general case. And the general case is not tolerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to come forward?
My name is Sarah Mann, and I'd like to waive my address for safety.
Okay.
In honor of Mother's Day, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize some mothers out there. Mothers who are fleeing war-torn countries in attempts to provide a better life for their family. Mothers who are trapped within the grasp of empire around the world who face famine, disease, bloodshed, and bombs like the ones made by weapons manufacturer General Dynamics at 4300 Industrial Avenue here in Lincoln. Mothers here in the so-called United States who face violent deportation by ICE agents without due process. I would like to hold the remaining of my time for a moment of silence, at least 60 seconds. I would like to hold the remaining of my time for a moment of silence, at least sixty seconds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Anastasia Fenner, I'm going to waive my address for my own safety. And I would like to read Mamu Khalil's letter to his newborn son, Dean, written in an ICE detention center in Genoa, Louisiana. Yaba Dean, it has been more than two weeks since you were born, and these are my first words to you. In the early hours of the twenty-first of April, I waited on the other end of a phone as your mother labored to bring you into this world. I listened to her pained breaths and tried to comfort, to speak comforting words interior over the crackling line. During your first moments, I buried my face in my arms and kept my voice low so that the seventy other men sleeping in this concrete room would not see my cloudy eyes or hear my voice catch. I feel suffocated by my rage and the cruelty of a system that deprived your mother and me of sharing this experience. Why do faceless politicians have the power to strip human beings of their divine moments? Since that morning, I've come to recognize the look in the eyes of every father in this detention center. I sit here contemplating the immensity of your birth and wonder how many more firsts will be sacrificed to the whims of the US government, which denied me even the chance to furlong to attend your birth. How is it that the same politicians who preach family values are the ones tearing families apart? Dean, my heart aches that I could not hold you in my arms and hear your first cry, that I could not unfurl your clenched fists or change your first diaper. I am sorry I was not there to hold your mother's hand or to recite the arhan or call to prayer in your ear, but my absence is not unique. Like other Palestinian fathers, I was separated from you by racist regimes and distant prisons. In Palestine, this pain is part of daily life. Babies are born every day without their fathers, not because their fathers choose to leave, but because they are taken by war, by bombs, by prison cells, and by the cold machinery of occupation. The grief your mother and I feel is but one drop in the sea of sorrow that Palestinian families have drowned in for generations. Dean, it was not a gap in the law that made me a political prisoner in Louisiana. It was my firm belief that our people deserve to be free, that their lives are worth more than the televised massacre we are witnessing in Gaza, and that the displacement that began in nineteen forty-eight and culminated in the current genocide must finally end. This mere belief is what made the state scramble to detain me. No matter where I am when you read this, whether I'm in this country or another, I want to impress upon you this lesson. The struggle for Palestinian liberation is not a burden, it is a duty and we, and an honor we carry with pride. So at every turning point in my life, you will find me choosing Palestine. Palestine over ease, over comfort, over self. The struggle is sweeter than a life without dignity. The tyrants want us to submit, to obey, to be perfect victims, but we are free and we will remain free. I hope you feel this as deeply as I do. Dean, as a Palestinian refugee, I inherited a kind of exile that followed me from every border, every airport, every forum. Borders might mean something to me that they might not mean to you. Each crossing required me to prove my docility, my identity, and my very right to exist. You were born an American citizen, you may never feel that weight. You may never have to translate your humanity through paperwork, countless visa applications and interview appointments. I hope you use this not to separate yourself from others, but to uplift those whose circumstance, who live circumstances under the same circumstances that what constrained me. But I won't pretend the citizenship protects you, not completely, not when you have my name, not when those in power still see our people as threats. One day, you might ask why people are being punished for standing up for Palestine, why truth and compassion feel dangerous to power. These are hard questions, but I hope our story shows you this. The world needs more courage, not less, and needs people who choose justice over convenience. It is nothing but the dehumanization and racist disregard for Palestinians that renders their lives forgettable and that dares describe Palestinian fathers who love their sons as terrorists. People forget that the world so quickly forgot of the killing of the four-month-old Imam Hijo in Gaza in two thousand and one. But why did Abu Attermas beloved son Abdullah die hungry for bread? Who recalls the children lost in the Flower Massacre? Where is the justice for the fathers in the West Bank who carefully dressed their sons for prison? Why does liberty not visit the bodies of Palestinian children whose limbs are missing, whose ribs are exposed under thin skin, and who are born lovingly only to die under an Israeli bomb? On this first Mother's Day for Noor, I dream of a world where all families are reunited to celebrate the incredible women in their lives. Many years ago, on one of our first dates, I asked your mother what she would change in the world if she could. Her simple response was, I just want people to be nice to each other. You were born to a mother as gentle as she is fierce. I pray that you live in a world shaped by that kindness. I hope with all my heart that you will not witness the oppression I've known. I hope that you never need to chant for Palestine because it has long been free with dignity and prosperity for all. I am certain that in this world, you and I will visit Taboris together, drink from the river, and marvel at the sea. There, in a free and just Palestine, you will see the fruits of our struggles.
Thank you.
My love for you is deeper than anything I have ever known. Loving you is not separate from the struggle for liberation. It is liberation itself. I fight for you. And for every Palestinian child whose life deserves safety, tenderness, and freedom.
Miss Fenner, I've given you extra time, thank you.
I hope one day you will stand tall, knowing your father was not absent out of apathy but conviction, and I will spend my life making up for the moments we lost, starting with this one.
Thank you.
Writing to you with all the love in my heart.
Thank you. Good night. Is there anyone else in chambers this evening who'd like to address the council? Seeing no one else address the council, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Second, by acclamation.
Chair Washington, before we adjourn, I just wanted to say to yourself, Madam Clerk, Councilman Bowers, Margaret, and the moms and grandmas watching, happy belated Mother's Day.
Thank you. We are adjourned.